All right, we'd like to welcome everyone to Planning Commission tonight. I've asked Commissioner Warnock to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
You'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing we'll start with is minutes from December 1st.
I move we approve the minutes from December 1st.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're gonna skip ahead to Agenda Item 6, Zone Change 300 North Duplex Edition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant on this item, the 300 North Duplex, has asked that that be continued. So, that indeed is what we'd like the Commission to do. There's a public hearing scheduled for tonight. So if any of you would help us by way of making a motion to continue Item Number 6 to your February 2 meeting, including the public hearing that we have scheduled for that tonight, that would be wonderful. And I'll just mention as well, in case anybody's here for that item, or has anybody, any neighbors come for a public hearing. That makes it really easy.
Okay.
If anybody does have questions about that project and they want to talk about it, we're happy to meet with them anytime. I'll just mention that, so, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, super, thanks.
Okay, I move that we continue the Zone Change and Public Hearing proposal for Item Number 6, 300 North Duplex Edition.
Second. We've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Discussion Modura, I think that's how you say it, Presentation.
Who's going? See me? I'll be brief. Most of you have seen this project before, I think at least once, if not twice, as a concept plan a number of months ago. So I'll just start by mentioning that the applicant has made a number of revisions since you last saw it. We've had pretty regular correspondence with them over the course of the past several months. Subject property in this case is south side of Spanish Fork out here, I-15, just north of River Health Building in Salem. This is a really, really big deal, I believe, for Spanish Fork for a handful of different reasons, including that it's gonna be a very, very prominent development. And it's going to be the first development in this part of the community. The first project that'll take advantage is potentially, I'm speaking assumptively, as if it's gonna be approved and the developer's gonna move forward and all of that. But it would be the first project, I guess, that would take advantage of the sewer lift station that was just being finished up now. And really, the same vicinity of subject properties here. So again, really prominent. It will set a tone for other development in the area. Talking about the things now that I think add pressure to us as the city, to try to make sure that we do everything we can with the applicant to make sure that we're getting it right. And I'll mention as well that this is a land use that we only plan for in pretty limited parts of Spanish Fork. And this happens to be one of those areas where, over the years, the City Council through adopting different iterations of our general plan has said, they feel like it's appropriate to have high-density residential development. With what we'll see tonight, the applicant's pushing really ceiling of the density that would be allowed, which for us is about 20 homes per unit. And in this case, I personally think that could be a very, very helpful part of a bigger effort to develop properties around the Salem Benjamin Interchange, where we're gonna anticipate having probably some pretty intense non-residential development in the future. And probably slowly as we move to the north and the east from this property, you'll see land use intensity decrease, going maybe from this type of housing type to maybe some less sizable, less intense residential uses for townhomes and that type of thing. We could re-hit the single-family homes and then just the other types of housing that we see south of Valley and that sort of thing. So, kind of like ground zero relative to plans that the city's had in play for this kind of use. And it's been a pleasure working with Mr. Seale in this group to get to this point. We hope tonight that he'll be really candid and direct, provide Mr. Seale and his folks as much input as you can. After tonight, we would take a couple of steps. First, we'd start scheduling a neighborhood meeting that I'd like to be either next week or the following week. Soon after that, we would arrange for public hearings with you and the City Council in February, and just kinda see how the process unfolds from there. I think that's everything that I wanted to mention. Any questions for me before I create?
Is the infrastructure adequate in this area for this proposal?
With things that the applicant's aware that they will have to do, yes.
Got a squeaky spot right here.
It's on purpose.
It's on purpose, so when I shift back and forth, that's what I do. All right, you're doing a good job so far, anyway.
Next week, you'll be nervous.
Well, that's good. Does this work, or do I just tell you next slide?
Try it. There you go.
Oh, bingo. Nice. Perfect. Well, to start out, Planning Commissioners, thank you for having us. We're very excited about this. The last time that we came before you, this project was quite a bit smaller. And it only entailed about 10 or 12 acres, and we've added to it another 25 acres. So in total, it's about 35 acres. And so, I think the same design has carried through, as you've seen before. It's just on a larger scale. So I wanted you to be aware of that. And just to reiterate what staff has said, we have thoroughly enjoyed working with them. It's been sometimes tedious trying to just get exactly what Mr. Anderson wanted. And but after many renditions and getting to this point, we feel like we have finally accomplished the goal that he is, I tell you, a strong, strong advocate for Spanish Fork City. And he wants what he wants and knows what he wants. And getting to this point, we feel like we have accomplished that goal. And so it's been, it's been great working with staff along this process. I want you to be aware of that. Again, as, as, if I may call him Dave, has mentioned that the process, you already know what we're going to do, what we're asking for. The neighborhood meeting's gonna be next, and then public hearing's gonna be in February. And hopefully, we can kinda get over that hurdle and get going on to final plat to get this thing moving sooner rather than later. So, with that said, just to give you a brief overview, so you kinda have a good location of where this is located. This is off of the, what they call the Benjamin Exit, which you're very well aware of. Across the street from the River Health, and it's in this boxed area. If you look closely, this is kinda hidden in there, but you can kinda see a 3D model of how this would lay into the land use. Being the first one, it's kinda stark. It's the first thing out there. The sewer lift station is directly to the east of this. Power has been upgraded. Storm drain, we're working through, working with UDOT to get the accesses and signalize intersections all taken care of. So we're in those processes currently. Storm drain, what else was the other one? Water, again, is there. We know that we have to take that through the entire site to feed it to the north and to the west. So that will all be in this area. This is kind of a top view of the project. As you can see, there are the master plan data down at the bottom of 23 four-story, 28plexes, and 42plexes. And then, there's one large clubhouse that is in the middle. I know there's a laser here, there it is. Clubhouse, recreation center, pool, basketball court.
Gary, what's the total units?
Total units is 749 on 35 acres. So what this project's gonna, what we're gonna do is just kinda give you a fly-through, and then blow up each of those amenity areas, dog parks, building elevations, and have you take a look at everything. So here's a 3D version of it. And this is what we're proposing that the buildings look like. Now, don't be alarmed. One of the questions that came to us was, these are very white, very stark. And I said, by purpose, on purpose, because I want your thoughts and concerns, or whatever you want to see color-wise. I brought three different color boards that we would propose to do. It's, we would use all three of these color boards, so it's not the same building everywhere you look. And it's a different facade with different brick, different stucco, different ironwork, different hardy work. And so, Derek, do you mind bringing those up? And I'll just line them up right here, and you can just look at those as we're discussing that. That's the reason why we kinda left this white. Sorry. So as you can see, that we have the different bricks that go with the different stuccos, that go with the different hardies and the trim.
And your purpose is to alternate between these colors?
Alternate with them, not to have one solid all the way across, because you wanna have some differentiator. But if you have a building like this, then we would use Building A, would be that. The next building next to it would be Building B, right? And then C. And then, so you don't have them all cookie cutter the same all the way across the board.
Stucco stays consistent through all the building?
The stucco stays consistent. That's the only thing that kinda draws them together. That's exactly right.
Where's the, which, where's the stucco on this building?
The stucco would be the checkered, this right here. So it's creased, and it has a line, so it is actually broken up. It's not this huge plane of stucco. So you have these creases that are put in this to just kinda give it a little bit more dimension when you look at it. This would be the hardy, and obviously the brick on the bottom, and along the top of this here.
Would you vary the design on each building, or just have the same design for the entire building and change it to the next?
Same design on the entire building, change the exteriors.
So none of the, none of the, say, the faucets and basins that come out would be different?
Correct. That's correct.
Will your renderings for the public hearing show these on?
I can, I can put those on there if you'd like, yes.
Yes, please.
I'm happy to do that, yes. Next, again, just an entry monumentation. It's kind of plain, but just to give you an idea of what this would look like as you come in. At each of the main entrances, you would have one of these monuments to tell you where you're at. Just another street view of how it's gonna look on a public street with the sidewalk, planter strip. Try to do less grass because of the water issues. We're trying to do a little bit more zero-scape, if you will, on the areas that are not playful. But then concentrate on the green areas that are gonna be as larger open spaces. Let's see, did I already go past this? Okay, so this is the main rec center, so you can see where that pink oval is. And this is what it will look like on a bird's eye view. So you have two pickleball courts, you have a basketball court, you have a play area with multiple play structures. You have a large clubhouse with a pool, hot tub, with parking that comes off the main road here. And if you look down this way, this is going towards 1200 West. So as you look in, you kinda look straight down that tree-lined street and look right at the clubhouse. And then the opposite's the same way, as you go out, you look back at the pickleball courts. It's very centralized and easy to get to for all the residents. These are the playground locations. Again, you've seen the one that's kinda in the larger area. But there will be playgrounds located throughout. So if you go back, and you can see where those playgrounds will be located with those pink ovals. Just some open space by the clubhouse. Again, the grassy areas will be centralized to be usable. More open space, what they would look like.
Do you meet the R4 zone amenity requirement with this plan?
We do.
The number of units?
Yes. Yep. These are dog parks located within. The entry monumentation that we talked about earlier, where they would be located.
What are you gonna do on the southwest right there?
The southwest.
I'm interested in your project, but also what's out there too. Do you have that?
This right here?
Yeah.
This will be your future commercial. So that'll come in on a different application.
Is that your land?
That is not my land. So I have a contract to get this piece here.
Okay, it's not, you don't have it under contract?
I don't have any access, no.
Got it, got it.
But that will come in. I know, speaking with the owners, potential owners, that they will, I think they need the rooftops before that commercial will follow. So that's what they're after.
You're paving the way.
I am. Yep.
Okay, can I ask a question about the roads here?
Sure.
This entrance and this entrance are what constitutes the road as it is now, right?
Correct.
With around about in center?
Correct.
There isn't much on that road as it is, but if this project goes in, it's likely to spawn other projects to the north. And this will become a pretty important roadway. And I see that you've got roads coming here to the west, nothing to the east, of course. Is the plan to bring the traffic around, or is the plan to leave this more or less a two-lane road that'll come over onto Arrowhead?
So this road will be improved to city standards for full width right away. I believe also that there has been discussions in, Scott, do I have? About doing a signalized traffic intersection at this intersection right here. So there'll be one here on 1200, there'll be one on 1300.
That's a commercial collector, too. A commercial local, I heard.
Going to the roundabout?
Yeah.
It's a commercial local or a commercial?
I think it's a commercial local is what we.
Why not to get all the lanes right turn, left turn, and then repeat the signal? And then, once you get to the roundabout, it'll be back to smaller roads.
That leads into one of my questions. Are this, are we looking at public streets that'll be dedicated?
These are all public streets. Correct.
Are there, where's the city planned trails through here?
City planned trails, are they running along?
They're along the east side of 12. There's one down the state road.
And one down the state road.
One across the north. And they meet the trail's master plan, which this box is completely, it'll create a box that keeps them without crossing roads. When the next piece to the west is down the Christians and Parson, it'll have the box all the way around the perimeter.
Great.
Okay. Danielle, yes?
In, in the slides that we've seen, I don't see any kind of fencing or anything around the project right now. Will you provide any fencing for this project, whether it's?
I believe what we have decided to do is along the front of the highway here, that we wanted to do a split-rail, white or dark tan type of fence to just kinda give you a barrier. Because we're on public streets all the way around this, we want it to be open. So it looks open as you drive through the, the project, that it's not walled off. The dog parks will have their own wrought iron type fence around it, so to keep the animals inside. And then, you know, around the pickleball, around the basketball, those will be the 10-foot chain link, rubberized chain link fences to kinda keep everything inside there as well.
Are you showing adequate parking per R4 now? 2.5 per unit and 0.6 garages?
Yes. So if you look, thank you for bringing that up. These are all independent garages, here and here. And then all of these buildings have tuck-under garages as well.
On the first half of the?
On the first half of the floor. Okay.
Enclosed garages, or are they just a covered parking area?
It's, no, it's an actual garage with garage doors. That's the city standard that we have to meet. Yep.
Elevator, they're four-story building?
No elevator. Open stairwell.
What's your experience with building a four-story building with no elevator?
Usually the four-story's a little bit more challenged to sell or lease. But it seems to be, I mean, if you get enough of a discount on the lease side of it, people will rent it. It doesn't bother them to go up. We did, we did a similar project down in Payson that are all four stories, and I haven't had any issues at all.
And are these rentals or owned units?
This, so if you look at this piece here, is planned to be a rental unit. And this is planned to be a condominium for sale.
So separate, so this one will have a HOA over here?
If you notice here, there's another clubhouse, pool, amenity area for this smaller section as well.
So back to the question about parking, are they independently meeting that limit?
They are. Yep, yep. Good question, yes.
Will you be dividing this into phases?
We will. We're anticipating that the first phase will encompass this, and then all of the roads to get to here, to get the, kinda the backbone infrastructure in. And then we will develop the bottom half first, and then this will be second, and this will be third.
So the clubhouse is in the first?
It's in the first. Correct.
Another thing I was going to ask about, so on the townhome section that you are looking to sell, how is it proposed to collect the fee? I imagine that there would still be an HOA of some kind?
That is correct.
And a fee to maintain all of that, that's quite an area. When you look at all of the hard surface that needs to be maintained, as well as all of the trees and a little bit of green area, how's it proposed to make sure that that is collected, and then the work is done?
So, well, we'll have to install all the work, number one, first off.
Yes.
But we will have to set up CCNRs and an HOA that's specific to this area. And it will be professionally maintained by HOA West. They're out of Lehigh. And that's who does most of our HOA maintaining. And so, when you buy a project like this, there's a transfer fee. So when you buy in, it adds to the fee as a reserve. And then you pay a monthly fee that has the maintenance side of it and the reserve side of it.
And so you will turn that over to an HOA committee?
Correct.
Who will be responsible to see that that's done?
That's correct. So they'll do insurance on the entire property. Then they'll have a reserve study that's taking place to resurfacing of the blacktop. They'll have to do the exterior of the buildings, because they'll be condominiumized. That will be insured. And then there will be a maintenance book that has to be upkeep, or upkept for that purpose and maintenance on that.
And your experience has been that those weather quite well, that, you know, over the years, they're maintained, and there aren't many problems with having those?
You know, we've been doing this since 2011. And in those years, every project that we've done, and we've done close to 2,000 doors in Arizona, Texas, Idaho, and Utah, all of those have been maintained. Knock on wood, we have not received a lawsuit, we have not. So everything is done according to what we have planned. Any other questions?
I have, I have one other question.
Sure.
We were talking about the exterior of the buildings and stuff. Has there been any thought put towards the possibility of adding balconies or something else that would add to the relief on the, especially the front of the buildings? You've got quite a, you've got quite a few that are right there along Arrowhead, and that's going to be your most visible. But you've got the other roads, and, you know. My concern is, is that I would like to see this to be a showplace, if you will, that Spanish Fork can, can point to and say, this is the style, or this is, this is what really goes good in our town and what we are looking for.
Sure.
And so, you know, just straight up and down. You know, I really like the way that you've got the relief on the front, the varies, you know, goes, it's kind of a curved look. And each one of those are nice. Have you, have you thought anything about?
We have thought about it. You know what my biggest, our biggest concern is? Is you put balconies on here, and you end up with a BYU flag, you end up with a Utah flag. You end up with all these different things, bike tables on the edge.
We put BYU flags, but we don't want a Utah flag.
I'm okay with the Utah flag.
But what you think is a great amenity sometimes turns into the biggest eyesore with banks, or with bikes hanging off the edge with.
An open storage unit.
Open storage, or barbecues lids left up, or whatever it may be that's somewhat unsightly as you drive in. Personally, I think a cleaner facade, especially on the main highway, it just, it just looks better overall, has better aesthetic.
I understand, but I have a differing opinion, because of the new ones that have been done in Springville and Provo, in very, very visible locations, I go past those quite often. And they're very attractive. There may be a barbecue grill out there occasionally, there may even be a bike. But for the most part, they're attractive, they look good. And to tell you the truth, if they're well-maintained, and if you have certain rules that you're going to enforce, then there shouldn't be a problem with anything turning into a, a storage-type place. And I know that I haven't built any of these, so, but anyway, that's.
Look at something real quick. Well, these are all just first floors. What I wanted to see is having a balcony.
John, I have mixed feelings on that one. I could say it going either way, just what it's worth, just for some more two cents in there. On the balcony versus no balcony?
You like no balcony?
I think I might like, yeah, it's close, but I think I'd prefer no balcony.
Okay. That's just a personal opinion on my part.
And I'm more than happy to do a rendering just to see where we could put them in, just to see if it works. I'm happy to show you.
Well, you know, I don't know that that is something that's an either-or issue.
Right. A lot of, a lot of issues here. So this is gonna be your main kinda living area. These are bedrooms, these two windows. So this is your main living area. And if you look at this, it translates over here, which is probably one of the further pop-outs.
Yes.
And so if you exceed that, pass that footprint, now you're, that's, that building footprint, now we have to start setting everything else back. And now we start losing the open space that's required, the parking. It's a domino effect, right? So that's, but I'm more than happy to take a look at it and see if there's any way we can make it.
Yeah, because, you know, in that, in that scenario, you've already popped the building out further here on the left side.
Yes.
And, and so I'm not advocating that every single unit should have that, but it may be something that adds to the eye appeal.
Sure.
And I don't know, and we, we've had these discussions before about balconies and how they do become somewhat of a cluttered space. But my, just, I hadn't thought much about that until we had that discussion, and I've been noticing.
Sure.
And I think that's overstated. I really do.
I think you just have to enforce it.
They look pretty.
You have to enforce it.
My, yeah, I think my thought on that is, I'm kinda, I'm with Joseph. I'm about 50/50 and can see the, but my daughter just lived in a, in some apartments where they had a balcony, and then as part of the balcony, there was a really nice.
Little storage area.
Storage area. And so, it looked, so where she lived, and they also had a rule in their apartment complex that it couldn't be a storage, you know, an extended. Anyway, I don't know, I'm kinda 50/50 on that too.
All right. A good thought.
Good questions?
Yes, sir.
You're calling on metal siding here? Is that a change to a hardy?
It's changed to a hardy, correct.
And then what, what is going on here?
So I was gonna say to the lockers, you can rent those lockers. Those are lockers, but they're in the breezeway instead of on the unit attached.
So there's five available closets for those two units on that floor?
Well, it's gonna be for. Uh, well, it's going to be for whoever needs them in the stack. So there's like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, five available for eight units.
Okay.
Yep. And then the same side on, on each of the lower floors, correct.
So have you figured out the square footage of the floor plan? Have you built out the floor plan for each floor of the stacked flats? Or you haven't got that for me?
The square footage? I think I ha- I don't have it right here, but we do have that, yes.
Do you know if you meet the average requirement overall for the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom in our four zone?
So that's the one thing we're working on currently is, right now, we have two and three bedrooms. We're scaling this back and remodeling it to get the one-bedrooms in that we need to.
Okay.
So when we come back, we will have that. That's correct.
You'll see that there's a minimum average requirement.
Correct. Yep.
I like the zone. So if you meet that, I'll be happy with the zone.
Perfect.
Square footage.
And I think, I'm pretty sure we do. I think when we laid it out, I think what we do meet the square footage. I'm not worried about that, but the one-bedroom, I know we are trying to make it all work.
I think it's nine hundred, but.
Yeah.
It's been a minute since we were there.
We'll be fine there. Yep. Any other questions? These are just more renderings of what we're doing and then, again.
So you're here for feedback, right?
We're here for feedback.
So I have some just general feedback. This, my biggest concerns are going to be that the overall product withstands a test of time. It's beautiful. It's livable. It's open. And I'm seeing that you're making, I feel like you're making every effort to make that happen and make that a reality. Where I'm hopeful that this will be a bar, a standard for that other, other developers who want to compete for rentals and for rent in this market. They have to provide something at least as nice as this, if not better, to, to overcome your market share, which I think is a good thing. And so if we start with a very high bar, it's going to be a win for Spanish Fork. So I'm most concerned that it's an excellent product. I see the layout. I really like the layout. I like some of the open space locations. I like how thoughtful you've been about the amenity locations. I think it's ver- I think it's actually overall going to be workable for those who live there. Off of 1200 West, I see that you're spilling accesses into the actual apartments right on the north side of 1200 West. So likely, most of that traffic, if it comes from that direction, is going to dissipate into the, into the dwelling units.
Mm-hmm.
I actually think it's really well thought out as far as the details of your plan. Now generally, for this area, um, this is, for, in my opinion, the best, if, the best spot, if not one of the best spots in Spanish Fork for residential units of this type.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the proximity to I-15, the proximity to what I hope to be a major retail corridor.
Exactly right.
Which if we don't get the rooftop, rooftops, we'll never get the retail. It's, it's a, it's a misconception that you're going to get the retail before the rooftops. So if we get the rooftops and they're nice, that's, that's a win for the city. I think it's a win for the city, the location, and again, I, I think it can be a catalyst for the retail that I want to bring to the city as well.
And I, and I have to tell you that Spanish Fork being a forethought, fore-thinkers, if you will, and bringing the services down to that area to make it so that it's available to grow will blow doors off of your neighbors. I'll tell you that straight up.
So one more thing I really like is that currently surrounding you is fields.
Mm-hmm.
So for me, that's built-in, uh, property right notice. That if you're gonna, if you're gonna live around this, you know what's coming. You know what's there. Um, and the size of this, the size and scope of the project is also big enough that again, it's built-in property notice. And I, I'm a fan of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Could you tell me, so you said that right now you only have two and three-bedroom plans for here?
Correct.
But you're working on adding one-bedroom?
Right. So we're remodeling the footprint on the inside of the, of the structure.
Cause it really seems like there's a big, there would be a, a high demand for one-bedroom apartments.
There is. What we're finding is probably 25% of this project will be one-bedroom.
Okay, that was.
That's what we're trying to, to meet.
Okay.
So you're right.
Would you, what would be the, your biggest percentage? Two-bedroom apartments?
Two-bedroom will be the largest percentage. There'll be about 50%. Three-bedroom will be 25. One-bedroom will be 25.
Okay. And then with the, back to the, your, um, detached garages, will there be one assigned to each apartment or is it something that people will pay to use or?
So again, similar to these that are tucked under, uh, if you notice that there's only, you know, 18 or so garages for 42 units. So there will be other garages assigned out, but they may not be right underneath the building. So they'll be in the middle of the project or whatever. The one thing that we want to make sure never happens is those don't turn into storage units, that they're actually used to park in, not to store stuff in.
Right. And so every unit?
I don't think every unit has a garage, if I'm not correct, but that's 60%.
And how does, how is that assigned?
I think when the office, so when, on the rental side, you go in and you say, I need, I want to rent an extra garage. You pay for it. And on the for-sale side, it will be, you can buy Unit 1A and if you want a garage, then that garage is yours to purchase with that unit.
I think one thing that you could do if you don't want it to have, become an extra storage unit is provide those storage lockers, have those built in as part of.
Those that don't have the garages.
If you have eight units, have eight storage lockers.
Great idea.
And, yeah.
Okay.
With the garages being part of the parking number, how will you manage that if all the garages aren't spoken for? People don't want them? Does that make sense? Like, so?
It does.
If, if, let's say 50% of people are like, hey, rent's already high. I don't want to pay the extra to get a garage. And now all of a sudden I don't have enough parking spaces in my, my project. How are you guys going to manage that?
So I think you will have, so Spanish Fork has one of the highest parking ratios of any city known to mankind. I'm just going to tell you that straight up, right? Which is not a bad thing, which is not a bad thing. If people don't choose to park in a garage, there are ample spots to park, I believe, on-site. Now, if on-site parking is not available, these are all public streets and I think there's ample parking on public streets as well.
Do you know how many spots you have with garage and without?
Well, garages is 449.2 to meet the code, so 450. And garages, then 749 times 2.5 is the overall. So you take the overall minus 450 and you have your number. That's what the, that's what it'll end up being.
That's what he said. I like that.
It'll end up being that. That's just the way.
Yeah.
It's like you've done this before.
Yeah.
Yes.
In our four, yes.
I have a question about, about your garages as well. You mentioned that, uh, you want to, you want to make sure that they're used as garages rather than storage units. That becomes an issue for this commi- this commission all the time.
Sure.
And with the city. How do you propose to do that?
I think through the CCNRs.
If you've got a really good idea, we'll pass it along.
Yeah.
If the CCNRs and HOA and the enforcement.
Will you commit to doing that now?
Yes.
So we don't have to remember to put it in our condition of approval?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
That's a good one.
That's, okay. Also, it seems like we've been, the city requirements have been going away from stucco. Is that right? Dave, stucco's been something that we've been?
Well, in particular with our four and our five zones, we require something other than stucco to be used to cover 50% of the facade of the buildings, brickstone. Other things are, are allowable as well, the, the hardy board siding, for example. Um, so certainly I think there's been an effort. Um, this would go back to when there was an architect on the commission a few years ago, I think. Um, to make sure that there was more of, uh, a variety of materials on buildings of this, you know, kind of bulk and size than, than any singular material. And in particular, stucco is something that, uh, we were trying to limit. Does that answer your question?
Right. Yes. And so then the stucco that's there, I can see how you're.
There's less than 50%?
It's less than 50%. Is, the question is, my, my question is, my other question is, with it seamed the way it is, is that something that'll be less durable? I can see how it's meant to look. Why is that?
I don't think it'll be less durable. It's just kind of like a concrete, you know, when you have seams in concrete. If stucco does crack, it will usually follow those lines and so you don't see the, the cracking that many of us have on our own homes because it settles and different things. So by scoring it and having those score marks, the cracks usually follow those and it keeps it clean.
I mean, yeah, so as you're going back to redesign to add the one-bedroom, do you have any idea how that's going to affect your room counts? Cause you're going to be, one-bedroom, you're going to be losing some basements.
Right. I think it'll actually, the room count will go down.
Go down? To go from two bedrooms to one bedroom?
Oh, no, no, sorry. Should be the same.
Then your square footage will be shrinking.
Not if you keep the size of the building. It's just the one-bedrooms get a little bit larger.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're not, so you've got 25% one-bedrooms and you're still going to have 749 units.
Correct.
Total acres again?
Total acres of this, 35 acres.
Buildable acres.
Would you mind going back to the slide that was the bird's eye view so we can see, uh?
This one?
Nope. Keep going back. With, that has the match. Quite early in the presentation.
Off the box.
Keep going, keep going, keep going.
That one?
Keep going. No, that shows streets. This one. Okay. So where are we here?
So this is Interstate 15 right here. This is the, the interchange that comes across.
Oh, there you are.
And it ties into.
That's River.
That's River Hill. This is the greenhouses.
Gotcha. Okay. I was looking at something wrong.
So 1400 just splits your condos and the apartments.
Correct. I think I was saying 1300, it should be 14, correct.
It's right across the other entrance into River here.
Correct.
You know, your density's a little, a little high. It's at 21.4 per acre now.
I know we're right at 20, so it might be over 35. I'm generalizing.
You'll tweak it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It depends on what the buildable acreage is right then.
We're not over 20.
Oh, that I do know.
We're trying to probably wrap 20.
It's probably an engineering marvel to be right there.
Must be a good engineer.
That's right.
So in your first phase, this road will have to be completed. Is that right?
Uh, that's incorrect. The first phase will start over in this intersection and go to there and come all the way across to there. Okay?
Okay. And so this one that is.
This will be the second phase as it goes in. Correct.
So that one will not be finished until you get to the second phase, which is this area.
That's actually the.
Or is that the third?
This is first phase, this is second phase, and this is third. So yes.
Okay. So Michael, could you bring up the general plan and overlay that so we can see where it is on the general plan?
Pretty close.
Yeah.
You can come text it.
So that's it. It's the square. The front is the commercial.
It's the commercial.
Yeah.
See that little notch?
This is the commercial area. This is.
This is commercial. So the designations right now are a combination of urban density, residential, mixed-use and that commercial.
Yeah. And we did reserve that corner, we reserved a commercial corner.
I. Works for mixed use. Mixed use.
And is this? Remind me, is this estate density? What?
That is, yes.
Any traffic studies? And that's going to be a public hearing. That's going to be brought up. If you've got any traffic studies on the impact of this, so what's our report said?
Um, between Scott and then the traffic engineer and us, we've met with you, Dot. We've met with him a couple of times. Met with him Monday, Monday. Talked about the signal. Um, the main issue was where that signal was going to be. A little sort of, so the grade for the signal definitely fixes that issue. But yeah, you know, it's wherever the 700, however, 8, 725 or whatever it is, units. Traffic engineer was pretty comfortable with it, I believe.
Are you requiring any further improvements on either of these roads?
So along the property, you had a wind. Once you get, leave that property, it's just the two-lane. Once you come to this area, there's a center turn lane. Um, there could be a right-hand turn. The warrant said, um, there's plenty of shoulder to do that. But once you get past this point going north, it's really just going for naivety. And so there's not a need for a winding. It's kind of more a two-lane highway feel. Once you get to the bottom there, there's that, um, turn lanes, turn lanes. So yeah, you have the signal here and then the signal down here.
Can I say, so, Todd, all the way down the, there'll be a center turn lane, right turn, left turn base going into the project. And then on all of the entrances and exits, there's a, a right, a left, and a through and a receiving lane. So they wind out to the four lanes.
Coming out of the project.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And I'll pull, there's a little striking plan. I can show you the, kind of looks at it, but.
I'd like to compliment the applicants for, you know, working closely with staff on this and, uh, you know, coming up with some good ideas here and stuff. And hopefully you'll continue to do that with, uh, a mind of what we've talked about, you know, about this being a, a showplace and something that, uh, not only your company can be proud of, but the city of Spanish Fork and residents will live there. They need to be, they need to feel like they're in, uh, you know, one of the best places in the county. And so, you know, we'd like to see that happen and we're, I'm, I personally am glad that you guys have stuck with it and moved in the direction we think that it needs to go.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any additional comments, questions?
Uh, you made a comment about, uh, Mr. Anderson being a stickler to work with and we appreciate Mr. Anderson.
Absolutely, you should.
A stickler to work with.
I totally agree with that.
He's the gatekeeper and.
He does a great job.
And, uh, and has a vision.
Yeah, I agree with you 100%.
And my only additional comment, I think we've talked about it a lot at length. The parking thing always comes up. It will come up in a part, in a public hearing. Um, so the more that we can talk to that and how you're going to thwart those problems that we've talked about is going to be important.
Perfect. Thank you for the heads up.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Is there anything, just maybe to, to put a real quick fine point on? Is there anything that you didn't see tonight relative to this that you'd like to see in a month?
The color elevations for the vehicles.
So I know that was noted.
The, uh, the layouts with the one-bedrooms added.
Okay.
Likewise.
The layouts of the buildings?
Yeah. I guess my other question is, is 25% enough percent of the, of it? Is that the right? Is that the right amount?
To the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Right.
Yeah, we really haven't taken any kind of an active role as the city in trying to define that. The applicant I know is acutely interested in getting that right.
Right. And that, and that's where we came up with those figures, was the marketing study saying that that's the demographic that, and the, the need of the demographic for the one-bedroom.
That was your study?
That's correct.
Is 2%, is two, not 2%, two bedrooms, you're going to be your highest saturation? I mean, your highest amount?
It is, yes. It'll be closer to 50%. Yep.
Michael, does only that one have a protective right-hand turn right here? Or does? I guess down here we wouldn't have yet. Coming out with a protective.
That's actually an old plan.
What is it?
Extended quite a bit with you, Dot.
Thanks for showing us the old plan.
Can you come up to the mic?
If I start low, then I, I can impress you now. The, the signal is, has all the turn bays that I talked about. And then the other two are going to be limited access with, uh, right in, right out. So the route should be kind of a, a long, called a pork chop median in there, right? That separates that right lane. There's. Yeah. If you're familiar with the lows over in Lehigh, they have those islands out in front to enforce the right turn. Not like at the Costco there. They actually extend up the highway.
Not.
I'm not complaining about Costco, but they're easier to get even left wise, but these won't. So they have right turns, but then there's full access on the other two. And the, it's wider than, now we're at 79 feet of asphalt across there. With full buildout, right? Both sides are built.
Anything else, Dave? That you wanted to ask or?
No, I think, uh.
Number of each unit type and square footages. You got, you catch that?
Okay. Average square footage. There are a couple of things I made notes of, but, yeah, we'll certainly double check.
You spoke to the longevity and maintenance of the condominium portion? And maybe, maybe speak to the rental portion. Same experience?
Same experience.
You're not having lawsuits. People are happy, maintained well, look good.
That's kind of our core.
Okay.
That's kind of our core business.
Property management, companies doing a good job.
Correct.
Got it.
Anything else?
Thank you, we'll come as ready as we can be next month.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, we'll go to preliminary plat, Sunset Village. We can jump back to. This item should be pretty straightforward, it does predate my hiring date with Spanish Fork, but maybe John might remember this project, it's behind what used to be the ShopCo. It's there on North Main. The project, Sunset Village, came to the city and was approved, the approval has since expired. And so the applicant has come back to the city for reapproval, if we jump to the next slide. So this kind of shows the layout and the arrangements of the units, I just, I do wanna call out, you see items one through twen, or units one through twenty-three here, the staff report does call out twenty-four potential units. I think the last time we spoke, there was the desire for the unit, that's the single-family home number twenty-three, to be an up-down split. And so all the others are side-by-side twin homes, as you can see. Applicant's been great to work with as far as the reapproval process, since the original approval, city codes and standards have changed and they were great as far as complying with the current standards. And so, for instance, originally it was an infill project, now it's being approved as a master plan development and it's in conformance with those requirements. If we jump to the next slide. And this is just indicating the, the plating process that would take place. There would be some dedication, you see there along nine hundred north, as well as the trail system that you just saw on the landscaping plan. The next few slides, we kind of show some of the elevations. This was at a time, as Director Anderson just mentioned, on the last item, we used to have an architect on the planning commission, and this was something, in reading the minutes, maybe you can remember, but in the minutes, it, it was looked at intensely by the planning commission as far as what the look and feel, materials, and so I didn't include every single home elevation in the slides, but there are some, for instance, where they're combined at the garages that have a different roof style, but I just wanted to provide you enough to see the product and the quality. So if we can go to the next slide. This is a single-family home, unit twenty-three. Let's go ahead and jump to the next slide. This is a different roof type, different layout, and then these are attached back-to-back. I believe that's the last slide we have on this one. So, pretty straightforward. Layout's very similar, almost identical to what was approved previously. Applicant is just seeking reapproval so that they can move forward with the project.
Did we, did the commission change zoning at that time? Has it been updated?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so currently it's got a R-three zoning.
Which is what they're still asking for.
Do you have no questions for staff, we'd be more than happy to invite the applicant up if they'd like to share any information?
Yeah, I think you covered that, we go off, this is a little more complicated than that, little Madera project. But yeah, we're essentially just, it's exactly what he said, it was, it's a reapproval of what was done but meeting the new current standards, which was a little bit tricky because we, you know, fitting in the walking trail and a little bit more landscaping requirement and some things like that, but we were able to, to essentially keep the same plan. What's your timeframe on trying to get this going? I think we're looking at this summer to, you know, spring, summer to start construction.
Any questions?
There'll be a wall between there and the back of the.
And the highway, yeah, so there's a, yep, there's a wall, there's a wall along the highway, the freeway, too.
The existing sound wall, right?
No, we have, we have an added one in there, too.
Will this have a, have CC and RS?
Mm-hmm, CC and RS are HOA, yeah.
And, and these units will all be sold rather than rented?
Yeah.
Fifty-five and over?
It's not restricted, it's, and it's not restricted that you couldn't own it and rent it, but the idea is that they're all, you know, separate tax IDs and sellable units.
I think it's a great design for this area when it came before us before. It's kind of a small area that is kind of a strange shape and access is limited. And I think it's a good design for the property that's there, get rid of the feral cats that are there and all that crap that blows back in there.
Yeah, I think it'll make that area feel, yeah, cleaner and even bigger than, it just looks like a little weird triangle right now, but.
Well, the freeway cut off that, that was a farm and the freeway cut it in, in pieces and this is that small piece. So it's never been done, or never, never had anything done with it, so.
So these are walkways between the unit, this is driveways and these are walkways?
Yes. Yep.
Over here, where, so, oh, this is driveway, is this?
That's just a, yeah, breezeway or an alley between the two buildings there, so there's landscape.
I do have one question that I wasn't sure of, I believe that in plant, in the floor plans that you've got, do some of these have basements?
Yeah, more, they'll have basements, which will actually help us with our elevation, that, that little triangle sits down in a hole. And so to catch the sewer, they'll have basements in them.
All of them?
More, yeah, I think for the most part, they'll have basements.
Will they be finished basements as you sell them or will?
Just whatever the, yeah, end user ends up doing, yeah.
Okay.
Are these guest parking areas?
Yes, uh-huh. So they all have garages and then there's also the required parking.
Garage, driveway, oh, and there's, you have one, two areas for, of guest parking?
Yes.
But the street there is public street now. So, that's open as well, tenth, tenth north. Pretty straightforward.
Perfect, yeah.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, someone like to take, make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Chairman, that the Sunset Village preliminary plat be reapproved?
Recommended.
Recommended for approval, according to staff's findings and conditions.
Second.
Here we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, passes. All right, general plan amendment, these will be public hearings, PEG. For a few slides, Mike, if you don't mind. So, I don't recall, I think most of you were there when we took a tour of the current Wasatch Palate facility. And you kind of saw the uses and the condition of the site. And we have spoken a number of times as far as the long-range vision for this area, given its proximity, the, the future I-15, Center Street interchange, potential frontrunner station associated with that. And so, tonight, we do have a, a short presentation, a lot shorter than the first presentation, but we do have another presentation we'd like you to indulge us on. But the item that is before you tonight, we're looking specifically at the general plan. And so currently, the designation is for low-density residential and for a number of reasons, which I'll, I'll let the applicant kind of highlight in their presentation, for a number of reasons. There is some, some opportunity for that to be redeveloped at potentially a higher density than what you see to the east. And so the east is a current low-density residential designation and was developed as such. And so, without further ado, we do have a very short presentation, but we'll give the floor to the applicant and then we'd be happy to answer any questions before we do a public hearing.
Thank you, my name is Jeremy Endicott, I am with Peg Companies, we're a development company based in Provo, Utah. Getting this to work.
Sorry, Mike, it's the PDF.
So Brandon did a great job, just kind of describing the area, and it sounds like you guys have toured the facility. It's built in the early nineteen hundreds, it's a sugar beet factory, it's had a wide array of uses over the last hundred and twenty years. A couple of buildings are now condemned, which you, you guys probably saw on your tour. But located just off of I-15, near the future I-15 interchange section. Let me go to the next slide. As Brandon said, it borders, single-family residential, I believe, it was built in the late nineties, early two thousands. You have the city-owned DIS golf course just to the southeast and a Spanish Fork River Trail that goes along the river up until the border of the subject property. And as part of our proposed use, we intend to continue that river trail through our property. So we've touched on the general plan a little bit, you can see, you know, in this area, there's proposed use for a future mixed-use urban density residential, it's gonna become a much larger corridor for the city. Especially with the potential frontrunner station coming in there. So this area is already poised for, you know, much more movement in the area. So this is our, our initial site plan, as you can tell, it's very preliminary. Our, our intended use is to not develop apartments. We want to develop single-family rental homes, you know, rather than having somebody living above or below you or, or to the side. You have, you know, a separate or perhaps a duplex home with a, with a backyard for pets, for children to play in. And of course, we would, you know, our intention would be to move into the R-four zoning, and so we would comply with, with the zoning codes of parking and garages, et cetera.
What are you, what are you showing with the different colors, what are you depicting?
Yeah, so these are for, it's showing the different types of units, we have one, two, and three-bedroom units. The smaller yellow ones are one bedrooms. And I have some renderings a little further down, just some preliminary that show what those look like. And then the blue are two and three-bedroom homes.
With or without basements?
Uh, no basements, just slab-on-grade. Go to the next slide.
And the whole, the whole thing is intended to be a rental community managed?
Yep, so we would do it all on one plat, it'd be professionally managed, professionally landscaped. So Peg Companies, we have a variety of apartments throughout Utah and also in the inner Mountain West, and so we have a a professional management company that would manage these, similar to how an apartment community is managed. But we'd have, you know, amenities like a pool, a clubhouse, dog parks. But it would be, it would be professionally managed.
What underlying zone is that plan contingent upon getting?
So we would, after the general plan amendment, we would apply for a rezone and our intention would be for the R-four zoning. I think our density would be more in the twelve to fourteen units per acre, not reaching up to the, the maximum of twenty.
Got you.
And how many acres?
This is about twenty.
About twenty acres with three hundred and three total units? Separate units?
So some are attached.
Some are attached.
But, yeah, I don't.
They're not stacked?
They're not stacked, no.
That's about, what, sixteen units per acre?
Yeah. I don't have my calculator in front of me, but.
Me either, but.
I, I anticipate we'll be in the twelve to fourteen units per acre once we, you know, have a civil engineer lay it out and. Yeah. So these are just some preliminary rendering, so our one bedrooms would be attached units as duplex types. Our two bedrooms would be detached. You can scroll down to the next slide. So we would comply with the, the eight hundred square feet.
For each side or the whole?
For each side, for each individual unit, for the one bedrooms. We would have some two-story type product, that would be two and three-bedroom homes with some attached garages to reach that sixty percent threshold. So you'd have a, a variety of one and two-story homes. So some of the benefits to the neighborhood, one, it eliminates the industrial use. You know, currently Wasatch Palate is there, there's also a trucking company that operates, and then there's also a company that they make pig food. And I'm sure you guys smelt it when you were on-site, and if you're in that neighborhood just east of the property and the wind picks up, you can, you can smell the pig slop. We'll do a, a lower-density product than an apartment complex, and we wouldn't be going three to five stories like you'd see in an apartment, so it'd, it'd match the neighborhood to the east being at one and two stories. It provides another housing solution for middle-income earners. We'd be, you know, kind of focusing on young millennials, you know, just out of college. I was, I was looking at the numbers yesterday, home prices, according to Zillow, have increased thirty-one percent over the last twelve months in Spanish Fork. The average home price is a half a million dollars in Spanish Fork and.
Do you have an idea how much you'd rent these for?
We'd be in fifteen to twenty-one hundred dollar range depending on the size of unit. So focusing on younger millennials that, you know, are starting to create families, don't want to live in an apartment, but can't afford a down payment for a home. And then also empty nesters, who are on the other end of the spectrum that want to downsize, you know, want to live in a, a single-story home, don't want to maintain a yard or, or, or maintain their home. So kind of focusing on those, those opposite ends of the, of the family lifecycle. We'd continue the Spanish Fork River Trail, you know, we definitely want to make that a nice amenity for our community, but also for the residents of Spanish Fork in general. And as I mentioned, great access to the future I-15 interchange. There's also been contamination on the site, and so we would, we would clean that up and, you know, bring it up to state standards for, for residential.
What type of contamination?
Just from the previous industrial use, so there was just coal that's been burned on the site and then also there's been some fertilizer stored with the trucking company from time to time, and so just making sure that, that the soil is, is clean.
Did Phase Two clean it up, are you gonna work with the state to?
We're working with the state right now.
Is the railroad spur that's there, is that going to be removed?
That will be removed.
And will you bear the cost of that being removed to the north side of, of one hundred south?
I believe.
Or is?
The, the owner of the property, our partner, he's taking care of that and it's been worked out with the city.
But it will be abandoned and no longer there?
Yeah.
Michael, do you know the answer to that? Brandon or Dave? The railroad track as it comes into the property?
I don't believe there are any plans to remove it.
So that'll stay going over one hundred south? You know it's abandoned on this property?
Where it follows Center Street? Follows Center Street. Um, I think rail property stays.
Railroad track as it comes in, across one hundred south, then into this property for the spur. It'll be removed on this property as they develop it. Where will it, will it stop, will their property line still extend across the road, or will we, or will it be pulled back to the other side of the road?
I doubt, I don't know, to be fair, I don't know, but I don't believe there are plans for anybody to leave the property or to. But I don't believe there are plans for anybody to leave the property or to remove the rail. Is it R-19 to the east? R-19 zone?
R-112.
It's R-112?
R-112.
Are there any long-term plans for the houses? Or they were actually offices when this sugar factory was there. They have not been included in this zone change, is that right? At this time?
General plan.
General plan, okay.
You mean have the homes been noticed, is that the question, John?
Well, the question is, is long-term, are they going to be included in something that is done here now or will they remain in another zone so that it allows either commercial or industrial use along the road?
Are you talking about the two out in the front?
You're talking right here, right?
I understand those would be torn down.
So in your rendering, it didn't show anything happening with those, with that area between the existing buildings and those?
Our intention is to remove all improvements on the property.
And once the civil engineer gets hold of that, they'll clean that way as well.
So eventually you'll want to widen that road and of course it would make sense to take at least half of that on this property. It's just where the trees are, right there.
Does your property come all the way back to here?
I...
No.
Up to the river.
Well, that's... So this is it? So it does come all the way back?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
If you remember, when we toured the property, the pallet is, pallet company is making use of quite a bit of that.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, they are.
Do you guys recall how tall this wall was by chance? And is it going to stay?
Our intent is for it to stay.
I think it's 10 feet. It's not six.
It's big, yeah.
Never is. Do you know how tall it is?
It's big.
I don't, but...
I know the six.
I would guess at least eight.
I'd say eight.
Yeah, I bet it's eight.
From this side, maybe from there side it's taller, but...
It's not that one.
It's big.
I'm talking about the one on the back side.
The one thing I'm going to miss is when I ride my bike down along the trail over there and loop around is the sawdust smell. I love that smell.
Who gets to set the charge to bring down the chimney, smokestack?
Maybe we'll let you.
It's become quite a landmark to South Utah County. You'll notice that the one in Lehigh still stands and that was another sugar factory there.
Okay, wait. Wait, go back to where you just were, that was a question.
Let's see the wall, but there's this big edge here.
There was a big wall. We're not catching it.
There's a railroad track.
It was near the rail spur, the wall got...
It went up.
So...
The rail went down.
Look on that.
Or the rail went down.
If you go here, will this road connect into the neighborhood?
Yes.
Mike, get right there. Right there, see that? I'll look at the wall. Tough to tell. Oh, we'll need a... If we're going to change the...
Do you put it in six foot six?
Yeah, it looks like six feet to me.
You like to be right there, don't you?
I just like Josephine.
Looks like six feet from that side.
But you aren't coming to us with the site plan tonight. It's only for...
General plan change?
The general plan change.
We intend to come back through the public hearing process for the rezone with a much more detailed site plan.
Can you pull up the general plan now?
I can tell you that, you know, my only concern with this is that we have those homes, single-family homes, they're just the east of this and although there's a wall between them, those are, you know, decent-sized lots. They've been there for quite a while. And it looked like from your sketch that those would be your single fami... or your unattached, or I don't know how to put it. That was where a lot of your two- and three-bedroom units would be along there. And then, you know, and then increase density as you come to the west.
Yeah.
Is that what, is that what you're proposing there?
Are there very many neighborhoods like this that have, that are rental neighborhoods that are...
Not in Utah. These are becoming common in the Phoenix metro area. And there's some in Dallas and Austin and a couple in Denver, but we haven't seen this type of product in Utah yet.
We haven't seen them this small, but we already have this product in Spanish Fork. American Homes for Rent is north of the Fieldstone Development in Legacy Farms. But the homes aren't this small.
Yeah, this would be different from that development and that it's all one single plat. You know, we would own it all, we'd manage it all, and when we sell it, we'd sell it to, you know, an institutional company that would buy the entire thing.
How soon after you develop it and it's rented out, do you plan on selling it to the institutional buyer?
We plan to hold it for the longer term, to stabilize it, you know, get it fully rented, get it running and money on and then make a decision, depending on the market.
I think that I would caution you that as you go forward with your plan and everything, like the prior applicant that was here before us, you know, we would like to see something here that, you know, is a benefit to the community and is something that, you know, can be looked at favorably by nearly everyone that goes by. There have been another, a number of communities where maybe they weren't quite up to par and, you know, their age shows quite rapidly.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, we want to avoid that kind of thing. And if this is going to become something that is more desirable and that begins to take hold in Utah, I would imagine that you would want to have a showplace that the people could come and say, if we're going to do something, we'll do it like this. I would hate to have something that is built there that would be the opposite, where they say, "We want to avoid this," you know? This is a lot of units on 19 acres.
I'll be interested to see how, once we have a civil drawing and it's to scale, how those units lay out.
And it's 20 acres, right, Jeremy?
20 acres.
What percentage, I won't hold you to this, but just estimate it for me. What percentage of the 20 acres require soil cleanup with the state? I don't know. I know kind of the section by the smokestack and by the older 1900 buildings is where more of the contamination is, not as much near the southern portion near the river. It's kind of more centered in this northern part. So most of the northern half, is that accurate? I'd honestly say like where it's a little browner in that area. So we've done, we've done a Phase 2 and we're doing additional drilling as well as we're preparing to submit to the state. Yeah. I don't know, I'd say maybe 20 to 25%. Okay.
Thank you.
The way that this was used originally is to the east of the building was used as a beet dump. And there were just mountains of beets that were there and stacked there and then they were taken on rail cars, either Lehigh or South Jordan. This plant could not handle all of the beets that were grown in this area. And so where the, where the smokestack is and those old buildings, the oldest buildings, is where that, all of the rendering of the beets took place. And so there's probably relatively a small amount of cleanup the further east you go. But around those buildings, there could be considerable. But it was all vegetable-based until they came in with fertilizer. That's where the real problem came. The inside of that building was not black until they brought that in.
Yeah.
And then, of course, you know, about all that you've got is sawdust with our pallet plant there, but there are, there's stuff in sawdust that's not desirable either.
Boy, it smells good.
Yeah, it smells really good. The turpentine out of it is kind of ugly.
Yeah. Okay, here's my question for you. When you have a meeting with the neighbors to say, "This is the awesome community we're going to build," how's yourself, how are you going to present to these neighbors who, behind them, own their lots and have quarter-acre lots in their building and have their families there? There's a perception in some of our community saying, "We don't want renters because of the kind of people that are there," right? So how do you sit down with neighbors that might have concerns?
Yeah, so we actually knocked all the doors that border the property and left them just a little flyer, similar to what our general plan application flyer was, just kind of introducing ourselves and what type of product we'd be providing. A few people, honestly, most people weren't home, they came in the afternoon, but we were able to chat with a few and overall feedback was positive. I think what's great about this product is that it is a little more upscale and it's... I just think to myself, I grew up in Linden, Utah. I'm 28 years old, I graduated from BYU. And I can't afford to live in Linden because they don't provide any type of housing like this. Even though I have a good job and I'm a college graduate, it's just, it's so expensive now to buy a home and to find a quality, like a quality place to live. And so, you know, I don't, you know, our intention is, you know, we're hoping to provide an attainable rent, you know, not something that's super expensive, but it's also not going to be on the cheap end. And so for, you know, it's for somebody who maybe grew up in Spanish Fork, has a college degree, is just starting a young family, just starting out in their career, but can't afford a half a million dollar home in Spanish Fork. And so they're able to live there for a few years, you know, build up, you know, their savings to be able to buy a home, but not having to live in an apartment, you know, hearing the neighbor kids scream through the walls and, you know, having to walk up the stairs or through groceries. And so I think it provides a really good housing type that I don't think Spanish Fork has right now. I think also, you know, if you drive this neighborhood, it's a little older. I think you can tell that there are quite a few renters in there. If you drive through the summer, a lot of the yards aren't well-maintained. And so I think, you know, our property is going to be very professionally managed. It's going to look very clean. I mean, if you look at other PEG properties, we developed 200 City View in downtown Provo, just across from the city center temple and university. We also developed the Flats at Riverwoods, which is on University Avenue in the corner of 4800 North, just across from Riverwoods Malls. You know, both very beautiful properties that I think have been very well-maintained and very desirable for, you know, renters in the neighborhood. So that's what my pitch would be. I think, you know, I think we're going to be great neighbors to them.
I went to your website and took a look at some of those properties that you have developed and they look really good. And of course, that's what you're going to put on your website.
Absolutely.
It better be your best, you know? But that's what I'd encourage you to do, you know? I mean, we want to, we always want to take a step up. We don't even want to go sideways, we want to take a step up.
I agree.
Do we have any other questions for the applicants? Could we go into public hearing? Okay, we might have more questions in a second.
Okay, thank you.
And let's go into public hearing. Is there anybody here from the public who'd like to address us? Come on up. We ask that you just state your name first and then go from there.
I'm Kristy Wetton. I live at 1366 West 520 South, which is the triangle lot on the top right. I will just start off with, we're so happy that the factory is leaving because it really sucks. We hear the grinder all day, we get sawdust in our eyes when we're in our yard, so we're really happy to have that gone. In talking to the neighbors, a lot of them were complaining about the freeway noise. It's almost intolerable even for our neighborhood, so we're concerned about all the people who would be moving in and how close they are to the freeway noise. And then, not to mention air pollution. There are lots of studies that have been done and on the American Lawn Association website, they talk about how kids are more likely to develop asthma and respiratory illness when they live within like 1,000 feet of the freeway. My house is 1,166 feet away from the freeway. So everyone there is in the danger zone health-wise. Sometimes sound walls do help with the air pollution. Also tree lines can help with that. So our neighborhood is hoping for a sound wall and tree lines. I think we're also probably going to be concerned about so many units in such a small space. We love that they're short, we love that it's not apartment buildings. But yeah, that's a lot of houses to be fitting into one small spot. So that's everything I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing. Brandon or Dave or Mike, do you want to talk about air pollution, sound walls?
Tree lines.
Of tree lines?
We'll require similar buffer like we have along for South coming through there, right? So we'll have trees, yeah, and landscaping buffer that'll have that continuing through there.
I don't know if, you can require mature trees.
Or there's a street.
You don't say mature trees, you're going to get trees that won't be tall enough for 20 years.
I guess to tonight's conversation, we're talking about just changing the general plan, so taking that into consideration because they still have to, the applicant still has to go to a civil engineer, actually how many number we can fit and so on and so forth. Do we have any...
My only comment would be, I'll be interested, I want to see what this density looks like when it's all laid out for scale. You can see right now, we all know the size, we've driven by it my whole life, we know the size of that house there. It's not big and yet it's two and a half of these. So when you lay that out throughout the whole thing, I'll be interested to see how that looks when that's presented to us. But overall, my, I'm, this product for what's going to take to clean up this area, there's going to be some density to offset that cost. I like this much better than like the Madera apartment building sitting right here in this site, so...
Is, what's this? Is this a clubhouse or a something?
Yeah, it's a clubhouse and a pool.
Oh, and a pool.
Is that correct?
Clubhouse will...
We've spent too much on the concept and so we appreciate Jeremy providing you some insight and some vision as to how they're going to develop the property, but just as a reminder, tonight we're mainly looking at the general plan, which is specifically, do we see increased density as being appropriate for this property? If you look at the staff report, I appreciate what Commissioner Mitchell just said. The DRC and the staff did feel that using that increase in density to spur the redevelopment of the property would be appropriate. And so the recommendation that you have before you was the wording provided by the DRC.
And that's the main impetus behind staff's recommendation of approval?
Yes.
Seems very pragmatic.
And so we'll definitely, as Jeremy mentioned, sorry, I keep standing up and down, getting my steps in. As Jeremy mentioned, there'll be multiple steps. This is the first step. We would have a more finished product that would come back before you, but tonight we're just looking at the general plan and providing that recommendation to the city council.
So as I mentioned previously to the commissioners, the company I work for builds for PEG. I don't feel like that biases my opinion, but just disclose that we, Mike, the company I'm employed with, does build for them.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I think, I just, I like what our, what our community member said about tree lines and sound walls for quality of life. That may or may not be part of what our discussion is, but as we're talking about more discussion about building along our freeway corridor, that's a good idea.
I'm in favor of the general plan change. I think it's a pragmatic approach to clean this up. Uh, later on, when we see an actual site plan, I think we're gonna have to be very aware of how the new units affect the existing property owners and, and be mindful of proper setbacks, uh, whether or not there's gonna be height limitations, so that both the new property owners will be, their rights will be protected and the existing property owners' rights will be protected, so that they can live in a symbiotic way.
A lot more talk about green space in amenities and a lot of the other things.
But in the meantime, I'm in favor of the general plan change.
Nothing else? I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend the general, the general plan amendment from low-density residential to urban-density residential located at five twenty-one South, fifteen fifty West, to the city council.
Got a motion?
Sorry, does the motion approve?
Oh, yeah. I said recommend, recommend?
Is your recommendation?
Recommend to approve.
I can second that one.
You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, not approve. Okay, passes. Thank you. All right. General plan amendment Canyon Creek Parkway.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This was on your agenda last month. Little different conversation then. Uh, we appreciate that the applicants moved forward with, um, proposing a particular change for the property here, which is located northeast of the hospital on the other side of Canyon Creek Parkway. Uh, this is the first building here that Capital Properties, it's the name of the company that built, that I think Industrial Supply is the, is the tenant in that building. Everybody have a good feel for where we're at, what we're talking about here? Uh, Lowe's is just kinda off the map here, a little bit further to the.
The brown is the solar farm?
No. In fact, Mike?
Public facility is at the hospital.
No. You're here.
It's a public facility.
We'll do everything we can to make this one take the half hour. Why do I know that, Todd? I don't know. Maybe I just look at the general. Maybe I do that. It's early, right, Shawna? Thank you for pointing that out. Todd, your first meeting, you were here until twelve forty-five, wasn't it, Thursday morning?
We're just getting started.
We welcome Michelle. Did anyone say, "Michelle, we welcome Michelle?"
Michelle.
Michelle's first night.
My first night was a midnight one, too.
Wasn't it? Usually try to scare people off.
It was on, on Zoom.
So, subject properties, yeah, thank you. It's right there-ish. And, uh, if from that perspective, we can maybe turn the general plan on, I think that'd be really helpful. Just see a little bit more broadly what the city's anticipated for the area. Um, it's an area that, I think, for all the reasons that you see as you drive around out there today, is on a very different trajectory than what most of us in this building, even probably just ten years ago, expected for the area. It was shortly after Costco opened. But, uh, the same developer of that project Canyon Creek started making some inroads with property owners on the other side of US Highway six here. IHC had already purchased property. They purchased the old Food for Less building and some property both adjacent to and kinda behind that, to the north of that. And a lot of different moving parts were set in motion to where the hospital ultimately ended up landing here, after there were some land trades and after the city had made commitments to help construct some roadways and different things like that. And then, to our surprise, Walmart came along and lots of other things fell into place much more quickly than we expected, which I'm just saying. Really in support, I think, of not only what we're talking about tonight, which is the proposed, um, change to what we see here, which would, uh, impact really just that color right there. Up until about this time last year, our general plan, um, called for more industrial development. That's what this particular color is intended to designate on the general plan map. Uh, throughout this area up to our twenty-seven hundred north.
Will you trace twenty-seven hundred north?
Down, maybe just a tad bit. Right here, which right now is an overpass, but, uh, this next summer, you, we'll start to construct a new interchange there. And that, that was the impetus for some, um, kinda visionary land use planning work that we did, um, which led to changes on this map. That's when changes were made over here, um, to expressly identify some properties for commercial uses rather than industrial. Changes that were made over here as well. Mixed use being this particular blue color here, uh, the red, commercial. And that vision effort kinda stopped right about here. That was sort of the southern boundary of, of that look at properties that are in some kinda close proximity to the interchange. But yet, I think the same concept really applies very, very well to this property here, which is that, um, there are other properties right now in Spanish Fork. I'm thinking of areas that are west of I fifteen, um, that for different reasons have excellent access to Interstate fifteen. Frankly, most of the developments we're working with right now are on the south side of State Route seventy-seven, um, north of the airport, uh, as well as, uh, the development that you may have noticed that's underway here. Probably about a million and a half square feet altogether that, uh, will be built there. About, uh, probably half of that, close to eight hundred thousand of which right now uh, is approved for construction, including the first building, which is about three hundred thousand square feet. I'm just saying that I think, um, unlike where we were just a few years ago, our belief that land for industrial development, um, in this area, today, we don't see the need like we did just a few years ago.
It shifted. It's, it shifted from this area over to by the airport.
It has. And because of things that we have now in this area, I think opportunities, um, for something that, uh, probably relies on better access and access probably would, in my mind, mean a lot of different things. Visibility, um, uh, things that most industrial developments probably wouldn't need to succeed, should be accounted for as we plan for what happens in this area. I think the develop, I'm sorry, the applicant's proposal to change this particular designation here from industrial to mixed use syncs up very, very well with, um, different opportunities that this property might afford, whether it ends up being developed exclusively in a residential fashion, which would be consistent with our mixed use general plan designation or, um, with non-residential uses, either exclusively being, uh, how the property would develop or a combination of both. Um, it's a much better fit for the area than, um, our typical light industrial kinda development. Um, and that's coming from somebody that I, I think, particularly light industrial development is absolutely wonderful for communities. Does some great things for, um, all of us in the valley. But, um, I think there are better opportunities here. So, that's my opinion.
What's the?
What does Springville have planned for? We know this is.
I might let the applicants kinda speak to that. Springville, here's what I know. Springville has been working on land use planning effort. I don't know where they are in that process, but I think that, I'm sure it's going really well. Knowing Springville, I'm sure it's just going great. And maybe you could just tell me when I'm wrong.
Yeah.
They broke that in too. Yeah.
Can I ask a question first? Tell me about the brown. That, that's public facilities.
Can you pan up?
What's happening with that right now?
I don't think this property here likely has very much development potential.
Because is that where the old dump was?
Do you know the truck in here or disappear?
Okay.
On the southern end, I think this area here probably, yeah, was historically.
There's water, there's another things, grain waste, stuff along here, and then this is just marshy, soggy bylaw.
I could see this someday being, uh, pretty primitive open space. Uh, I think there are things you could do that actually would probably make that an amenity. But I don't see there being much development happen there. Uh, I, we're extremely fortunate that this came along, I think, for the landfill that's on the south side of Spanish Fork Parkway. In my view, that's, that is one of the coolest uses, but.
And then the white, and then the industrial that's on the northeast, that's not part of go right there, the bubble to the right?
Right here?
Yes.
I think this is owned by Rocky Mountain Power.
Can you?
Um, we might as well include that with the public facilities designation, in my opinion. Uh, given who owns it, um, what they have going on through that property there, and how they.
Seems like it'd be good to make that consistent.
I think that's a good suggestion. We could even, I think, do that as part of this change, if you guys wanted to make that recommendation.
You don't need a notice for that?
I think I'd be willing to, to take the chance that we could, we could say that it was covered as part of this property. Conversation.
I'm a, I'm a leg. Just kidding. Well, they're, uh, still stinging from the.
Or should notice it separately, you think? Maybe the only concern that I'd have, not to, not to cut Walt off, but, um, in case Rocky Mountain Power had a particular concern, probably giving them some kinda notice beforehand that that was in the works.
Okay, now I'm ready to hear from.
Thanks. We're recommending it be approved, right?
Okay, well, yeah, as he said, we, uh, we're gonna watch this line here that was formerly the Swenson Farms. Across the street is the hospital. The hospital's actually gonna take some of it from us. We're working through that right now and expand with some medical office over there. It's gonna be a really cool area. You have the Highway six commercial right there. Our twenty-seven hundred north is gonna come in. The new exit's gonna be commercial there.
Could you point it?
Yeah. Let's see. Uh, it's been, since I was like twelve, so they use a laser pointer. Here we go.
And you were.
Finding it in people's eyes. Yeah, so.
So, where do you own, what's your?
We have this piece, this kind of triangular monster-looking piece here. This piece here, which is light industrial, that's five, or five different parcels. This little one here, which we're already pushing through a plan, it's already zoned light industrial in a nice tilt-up building. Actually, gonna be really cool with class offices and stuff. Uh, you guys will see that soon. Um, if it comes back through planning, I don't know if it does or it's already zoned. But anyways, this stuff here is what the hospital wants for some more medical office. And then this piece here, we had and sold to Woodbury. And I think they wanna just expand on what they've done already down there with the Canyon Creek. So, anyways, this big piece here is what we're here for today. We had suggested, um, doing some higher-density residential. And after talking with Dave, we came back with mixed use. We'd really like to implement the TDR program, uh, if that gets put into place. And kinda how you guys had said for Modera, that they would be setting the standard for that area, we'd like to do something similar here. Really high-quality product. Really good-looking. And, uh, if we needed to do some sort of retail commercial on it, we could. Where it's between the two exits and there's all this commercial here, there's gonna be all this commercial here, it might be better just to do a higher-density residential, which is a really nice product, to be in the middle for all those workers and other people from Spanish Fork, obviously. But, yeah, as we could talk to, uh, Dave, he said, this is one of the areas that the TDR program would be great because there's not really neighbors to get angry, right, if we do a higher density. It's far enough off the freeway from what that other gal mentioned, that we should be safe from any sort of hazardous fumes. Yeah. So, we're looking to do a really high-quality project. We had, um, some renderings on the residential alone, but now that mixed use is, is suggested, we, we're just willing to change the general plan to that and then work with you guys through what the next steps are.
I have two questions for you. The first is, can you state your name so that we can?
Yeah, Austin Pritchett.
Perfect. Second is, you said you might know a little bit of what's going on over here with Springville?
Yeah, well, the, they're trying to put together a big general plan. And we actually, well, I don't know.
I, I can answer that. The thing is, I went to the Springville meetings, whatever or not, is the, the border's all messed up. We talked with Crandall. We thought we had Crandall's property, which is the property there to the north under contract. We're still working on it. We'd like to straighten the whole.
We wanna.
We want to straighten the boundary out. The, the new road's gonna have a route about right there going and then come over and then connect. Go up to where it comes back.
Easy matters, go up.
Go up north.
We'll turn on the city boundary so that, I think what Kevin's describing will make some more sense.
So, you're wanting to move some area into one city or the, from one city to the other?
Yeah, there you go. So, you can see from that, just from the zoning.
Go, go further north, though.
That's about as bizarre as you could.
Show where the road's coming in, Austin.
Yeah, see, this is the one that comes from Smith's. It's a big, nice part of the road, and then it just ends, right?
And then the plan is to come straight down the power line and then come over to the route about, no, before ours.
Something maybe more like that.
Yeah, that's how the plan is now, that yellow line, right?
This is rail here, right?
Uh-huh. And so, go ahead.
Would the rail go away?
Oh, okay.
We would like to, to straighten that all out and have that all come into Spanish Fork, so that it comes straight down off that road straight to our property and, and do that way.
Well, we know those crazy jagged edges are nice for services and stuff. We thought maybe coming straight down, how the road comes along the power line, straight through and stri- and giving this part to Springville and taking this part of the Spanish Fork would make a lot of sense and keep it straight right along the road and, uh, kinda fix that whole area. So, we are, yeah, we do have a connection to the Crandalls and we've been working back and forth. We had a verbal agreement at one point and then they wanted something different. We're still working on it, but, yeah, so we've been trying, um, to really straighten that out and make that better for everybody. But yeah, as for right now, it's kinda.
But they're working on, you're, you're, you own part of that or that's?
We do not. That's Crandall's farm.
But they're looking at, they're looking at developing similarly to what you're?
They are not yet. So, that's kinda the issue, right, is they don't wanna leave until some stuff's in place, which I think our development going in and kinda showing, okay, this, it's time for this stuff to start developing is gonna kinda help, um, help them kinda move along and, and they have a lot of other farmland. They're not too concerned. So, but we just kinda need to get there.
Austin, you're talking about the Crandall's plans. Are you asking more about Springville's plans in the area?
That would be helpful, too.
I don't think we know yet what that is, but I know we.
Kevin was in their meetings, right?
Yeah.
The idea that there would be residential development in the area, that's been, seems like that's been their drive, right? Trying even make to put, uh, some pretty intense residential development. Yeah, there are things like, maybe some wet properties in the area.
Well, yeah, also there, yeah.
Probably be some challenges. Tightened developments.
And what about to the west of where the road is now or to the freeway that?
This is all Williams Farm here.
Right, the Williams Farm.
It's not annexed yet. We're, we're working on that, too. We're meeting with them prior.
Is it currently in the Springville?
It's not.
Just you've talked about.
That's Springville, right?
Not in Springville yet, but planned to be.
And there, and that's cha- that's a challenging area for development because of the railroad, correct?
Access.
Access.
Access, there's.
Yeah, a little triangle piece.
Just the triangular piece, man.
Which is Springville, Springville City owns, I believe.
Yes. There'll be an overpass here. Obviously interchange bridge, so there might be an opportunity to have a connection to twenty-seven hundred north of this property. This is the rail line that, um, will remain operational. There'll be a connection between these two lines. Let's just say roughly like that. Um, and that's where Front Runner would transition from this line to the other line. But, uh, negotiating a rail crossing here is likely gonna be a challenge. Frankly, I'd, I'd love to see it happen just because otherwise, even if the property's in Springville, I have a lot on earth good over the tops of it, um, just from a use perspective. But we have some similar challenges in this area of finding access to the Williams property and.
Yeah, but, well, the door's open, too. I mean, Johnson, Mike's now mayor, and I talked with Mike about this. He's friends with Packard. He's the new mayor over there. So, hopefully, we can get some sensible minds together and get some stuff going. and get some stuff worked out beneficial all at this point.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we're, we're trying to, for now, we're trying to get that light industrial, because we look at it as best use right now is to do with the, sort of ditto what the people just presented to you at the other place, do the same thing there, housing, it's affordable housing, one bedroom, two bedrooms. We're not thinking of going much further than two bedrooms situation. Done nice, close to the freeway access, close to the commercial, close to the hospital.
It'd really be nice to have those, those lines, you know, more consistent.
Oh, for sure, yeah, who knows what's...
Nowhere, but he is.
If we, so we're still really in good graces with, with Crandall, and if we can get possession or some sort of control or joint control over this, that will be a whole large, absolutely. Because we own this part right here, and if we could straighten this out, we could say, okay, you know, let's figure out, this probably goes into Springville, this all comes into Spanish, and it's just so much, so much better for everybody, so.
And Williams and Schwartz, they're...
So Williams is here, yeah, Schwartz is here.
Yeah, and are they, any plans for them?
Friday at Schwartz, Justin Erwitz, grandson, he's been a partner, says he's working with us. As soon as, I hope so it's a proper way, as soon as Grandma passes away, we'll be able to do something there.
She doesn't want to do any of that, so.
Well, she's 92, so...
It's on her timeline when that happens, so. But, yeah, Williams are, are open to talking, and Crandall, we've spoken with already, and we've gotten close a couple times and hoping to kind of put it all together and make it really cohesive with what the 2700 North vision was, maybe make it even better than that, so. So fixing some of those boundary lines. So anyways, yeah, main thing, though, today is getting that switched over to mixed use.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions at this point?
Public hearing.
We're into a public hearing. Okay, anybody here for the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing. Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
My comment is, is I think it's a good move to make that mixed use.
Make a motion.
Makes a lot of sense.
I think it's, that's nice that you're open to be part of the TDR's, if that goes through.
Everybody heard that, right?
Yeah.
Developer, favor of... Why would it not happen? I hope it happens. I just don't know. Well, I hope it, I hope it happens.
John, do you have a motion?
Mr. Van Hall, do you want to make a motion?
Hey, I'll make the motion. I make, I just lost it on my...
Oh, here you go, right there.
I make a motion, or I move that the, we requ, do we recommend to the city council?
Recommendations?
Okay, I move that we recommend to the city council that general plan, land use map change from industrial to mixed use for the property located at 2100 North Canyon Creek Parkway.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll adjourn before Dave has any other minute.
We're trying. We were, I mean, we've been close a couple times, too. We're, we're working on...
Get it done.
Get it done, so we'll keep, we'll keep on keeping on.
Thank you. All right, Dave, do you have any other business?
Nope.
All right.
Just a quick item of what?
I'm just kidding.
A quick three-hour item.
Trees, strip trees?
That one.
So make a motion, too.
I, Dave, I, I do have one question, though.
During the meeting, pardon me?
I have one question regarding this area. You know, we had the firm come in and talk to us about the general plan around the new freeway entrance and exit. At the time that we did that, I think that this was part of what we were talking about, was more mixed use in this area rather than sticking, you know, completely with either residential or industrial. This seemed like a good, a good mix.
As Dave said before, it kind of, it stopped at the industrial part.
We did, and you know, that was aspirational visionary documents.
It still set the guidelines for what's more...
It's not like there's a hard boundary in that case, but...
No, but I think, and my point is...
This is congru, I mean, it still agrees. It's complementary of this.
I think that's really, really important, yeah.
And, and I, and I agree with you that the, the property, that south of this property and north of, of Lowe's is a problem. I don't know whether anything will ever go in there like we were talking about. But as land gets scarce, you might be surprised what kind of, what kind of proposals there are. That's right. You know, I'd never say never, because to tell you the truth, I never, my wildest dreams thought that this would be anything other than what it was before anything was built there. You know, when Chappies was built, and that was the Swenson Farm, you know, that wasn't worth hardly a plug nickel. And the Swensons didn't even think it was worth $100 an acre, and that's the truth. And so now they're, you know, they're, they're having quite a laugh over the whole thing. So it's, it's an interesting thing, and I, and I think that that's a good addition to this, to this concept.
Scarcity is also the mother of invention.
If they can get it cheap enough, they can go in and make, you know, phase development. You never know.
It's a function of what they can purchase the land for and what they can do with it, right? And this, honestly, I can't think of too many places in the community that are better than out around the San Antonio Interchange and this area for some pretty intense residential development. Obviously, around the commuter ramp stop, probably the same way, but...
Yeah.
We'll see how this plays out. If you adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Pull adjourn.
I don't know why that mattered so much to me.
Meeting adjourned.
Hot diggity.